Let's see, David, Jess.
Here.
June.
Here.
Uh, Lisa Bloom.
Yeah.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Tom. I don't see. Uh, Rebecca, our student rep.
Yes.
Awesome, and I'm here, so thank you. Um, our next scheduled meeting of the North Middlesex Regional School Committee will be held at 6:00 PM on Thursday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. First order of business is our consent agenda. Uh, we have a series of minutes, accounts payable warrants, payroll warrants, and two donations totaling, uh, eight air conditioning units for Ashby Elementary.
The most.
Second.
That's June and Jess, alright. So this is approval of the consent agenda, uh, Jess.
Yes.
June.
Yeah.
Lisa Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay.
Yep, and I'll vote yes, so that is unanimous, thank you everybody. Um, next up, we had, uh, public communications and we have three, um, residents of the district who submitted to, uh, to speak at public comment this evening. I have Shelley Jones, Melissa Boylan, and Karen Stewart, so if they are on, um, which I believe they're in the attendee list, um.
Shelley Jones is in, is in the, as a panelist.
Okay. So we'll start with, uh, start with Shelley first, if you could just give your name and address for the record, and then, um, you have three minutes to, uh, to let us know what's on your mind. And I appreciate you.
Shelley Jones, eight twenty Ringe Road in Ashby, Mass. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Um, I am a parent of a fifth and sixth grader that both go to Hawthorne Brook. Um, on October thirty-first, I emailed the district and requested that our bus stop be moved from down the street from our house to pick up at our house due to a change in work schedule for my husband, who was previously on second shift. Um, the district denied that request, stating that, um, for several reasons, it was just not possible. Um, the biggest one being the timeliness of adding to an already late bus stop getting to Ashby Elementary for pickup. Um, the Dussie website states that a bus stop will be assigned within a reasonable walking distance, uh, within a mile from the home. A busy, high-traffic road with no sidewalks or even a shoulder does not meet those guidelines. Um, it, our road is a very, very busy road, but it is paved, it is, it is definitely within reasonable accommodations for the bus to come and pick up at our location, there's a lot of different options. Um, and the fact that none of them are being looked at and we're just being told no is very discouraging. Um, you know, I'm in over two months and I have no resolution and I'm, I'm left struggling to try to get my fifth and sixth grader to school every day of the week. Um, and in my opinion, due to the untimeliness of both Hawthorne Brook and AES buses, both to school and picking kids up from school, it, to me, it sounds like an additional bus needs to be added to the Ashby routes to alleviate all of that extra time that's being spent for these drivers to get to Townsend and back all of the roads in, in Ashby and to get these kids where they need to be on time. And you'd be able to accommodate the few parents that are asking for changes that we've exhausted all of their options. Uh, I'm not taking this lighthearted, I, I am very thankful for our bus driver, but I have left with nothing, we have no way to get our kids to and from school except for reaching out to community members and, and other parents in town and dropping my kids off for three hours every day, five days a week. And that's just not something that I'm comfortable with doing, nor should any parent ever have to do. Um, and I hope that there is some sort of a resolution that can be put in place for myself and the other parents in town that are struggling with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaw, I appreciate your comments and, uh, and appreciate you being here this evening. We do have, uh, just for the entire audience, we do have, um, a discussion on Ashby, Ashby busing coming up, uh, on the agenda. So the committee will be able to talk about that in a little more detail, uh, as we get through the meeting. Um, next, we had, um, Melissa Boylan. And I believe, if I can find my attendee lists.
I can allow her to talk.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Robin.
I just did.
My panels will disappear now soon.
I know, mine was too, so yeah, you're all set to go.
Alright. Welcome, Melissa.
Hi. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't see myself on the screen, so I was just checking. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight regarding busing from Ashby, I'm a parent of a kindergartner, um, at Ashby Elementary, as well as a middle schooler at Hawthorne Brook. Um, to be completely transparent, parent, I did file a complaint with the Department of Ed, um, through, uh, res- problem resolution system, um, so I have been working, um, with Dussie and Mr. Morgan, um, through this process. However, um, and that process did help my middle schooler, um, start to get to school on time for first period. Um, he still misses homeroom, um, often, um, and this week alone, there were three days where, um, the bus was late and he arrived into first period. Um, while there's been positive progress with this complaint process, um, it, there is still a remaining issue at dismissal for Ashby students in both schools. Buses are late to pick up students from Hawthorne Brook, um, these students are older, so waiting the extra ten to fifteen minutes at the end of the school day may not be as impactful at the middle school, but the trickle-down, um, has a tremendous impact on Ashby Elementary School. My kindergartner waits for approximately twenty-five to thirty minutes at the end of his school day to ride the bus home. While our youngest learners are still sitting in the music room at school, their same-age peers are at home having a snack and decompressing from their day in the other two towns. Additionally, this is beyond staff's contractual hours. What if there was a medical emergency, is the nurse even still in the building? In the morning, my son's bus arrives to Ashby Elementary around eight fifty-five. I was told through the resolution process that the school tart, start time was changed to nine AM. Has this been communicated to families, is this district-wide? All three websites indicate an eight forty-five AM start time. District leadership recently responded to an email that is, is anticipated that buses will be impacted by an additional ten minutes because there are a few Ashby families pushing hard to have their children picked up in front of their homes due to safety issues, that's a quote. I find this offensive, that the busing issues are being blamed on parents wanting their kids to be safe, this is a district leadership and budget allocation issue. I hear over and over again about the district's commitment to a sense of belonging and equity. Arriving late to school does not give anyone a sense of belonging, nor is Ashby being treated equitable. Nothing about what is going on with this busing represents us, I'm hopeful that the school committee and district leadership can help come up with a solution, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, appreciate your comments. Um, and we'll get into more discussion, uh, later, as I've said. Um, next, we have Karen Stewart. Robin, do you see her, okay, thanks.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, okay, sorry.
No worries.
Or that I have video either, but I can hear you guys, so I'm gonna go ahead with this, if that's okay.
Please, yep, we can hear you.
Alright, cool, um, I'm here tonight, um, my name is Karen and my son Trenton, um, is currently in his first year in the district, um, attending Ashby Elementary's kindergarten. Um, I also have two other kids that will be attending Ashby Elementary, um, I hope, um, throughout, um, you know, their school career as well. Um, tonight, I'm speaking, um, in consideration of what the district is also considering safe transportation for my children to and from school. Um, we built our home in two thousand and nineteen on four sixty-two Davis Road, right next to the home I grew up in, on four sixty-eight Davis Road. Um, when I attended Ashby Elementary School, uh, we had buses from Amadons, which I understand is different, um, but they had no question, um, that our road was not safe enough for children to travel. Um, we had pickup directly from my home throughout my school career, from kindergarten to high school, until I got my license, from where they still drove up and down the road, um, after. Um, DBus took over the department busing, um, I'm not sure exactly what year that was, or whenever that happened. Um, and contrary to what everyone's trying to tell me, um, DBus did, in fact, travel Davis Road pre-COVID. Um, there's multiple children on this road that they picked up, um, that were, uh, picked up pre-COVID. So I'm not sure why that changed, or what happened when that all happened, but it did. Um, so I'm not sure why I'm being lied to about that, but it is true, I live on the road and I saw the buses personally. Um, in fact, travel Davis Road, um, oh, sorry, 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 um, um, travel on Davis Road, um, simply ended because no kids resided on the West Townsend side of Davis Road, um, I completely understand that, obviously. Um, if I can do a quote directly from DBus in Townsend, that times change, um, and that was used negatively against me. Um, they are correct, times do change, and there's children now on the Townsend side of Davis Road that do deserve to be picked up. So I really can't, um, understand why that happened. Um, when I talked to DBus, um, in Townsend, I was hung up on. I moved forward to speak with the owner of DBus, um, out of their location. They were involved and did come in to look at our road, apparently, is what I was told. Um, with that being said, they were told for Ashby to run properly, they should have seven buses, which they were offered. They did not take, the district only accepted five buses, this is why I know this is a budget issue, and that's where this all comes in. It's clear that it comes down to money, everything is being disregarded, such as the safety for my kids, but budget problems within the district are not my problem, and I will not stop fighting about it. I've been given the excuse, every excuse in the book, uh, lies about the bus never going down the road like I mentioned, worries about the time constraints, um, on the road if the bus route changed. They told me, um, that there wasn't enough time to do so, but I will say that I, again, live on Davis Road, I do travel preschool, and I do see bus three parked on Wheeler Road before it's supposed to start its route, so I know there is more time needed, um, personally. Also, I was told by Townsend's DBus manager that the bus, um, drivers aren't comfortable driving Davis Road. If that is the case, I worry about who we're hiring in these tough times. Davis Road is paved with twenty-foot width, ten per, ten feet per lane, that's way bigger than a majority of the roads in Ashby. And I was told a list of reasons why the bus couldn't travel, such as sharp corners, steep hills, and dangerous shoulders. If a bus made of metal, plastic, and rubber finds Davis Road unsafe, then why is a child safe to commute that road? I've been told by the elementary school to switch my son to Townsend's school, because I live closer to Townsend. I'm disgusted by that, and I couldn't be more angry. It means a lot to me that my kids attend Ashby Elementary, just as I did back when I was their age. Due to the budget, there's a lot of oversights. Davis Road is a safe road to travel, and I hope that this is something that will help you guys to reconsider again, come take a look and hopefully change the bus route. Another perk to me living on Davis Road, that many people who live on Davis Road don't know, because most of them are new families, I personally know that the current bus stop at the Pines Campground is known to house sex offenders. These sex offenders have lived on there, they don't have to do anything because they're there camping. I grew up in this road, we used to get letters in the mail about how constant sex offenders were regularly being there, and I will never in my life allow my kids to be on that road alone besides anything else. That's one of the biggest issues, I think it's disgusting it was chosen to be that, and I really hope that you guys will open your eyes to understand that Davis Road is a safe road for my kids to be picked up on by the bus, it is not safe to walk, there's no shoulders, there's sharp corners, steep hills, and drunk drivers who fly up and down the road throwing nips out all day. So that's all I have to say, I'm sorry for all the hype, but I really take this seriously, and I hope that you guys will now take it seriously as well.
Thank you, Karen, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Alright, I think that was, um, what we had for public comment. Um, again, appreciate those that, uh, that did submit to speak and, um, again, encourage others to, uh, to do the same, it's, it's add an email, the, the ways that we get to hear from, uh, from the citizens, so definitely appreciate the participation. Um, next up, under reports and information items, um, the only piece I'll say, under the, the uh, chairperson's report is, um, I guess as we, uh, as we come into a busy season for the school committee, um, negotiations starting, um, budgets, uh, discussions, uh, also starting. Um, I just want to make sure that, uh, that, uh, as a group, that we're, we're getting input from our, from our stakeholders, but also keeping communication open between us. Uh, I've got a couple of comments from folks this past week. And I just want to make sure that as a committee, we're, we're working together, and if, um, anybody needs help with anything, you don't have time for something, please just, just put your hand up, and, uh, there's nine of us, and I'm sure we could find someone to to lend a hand if needed, but, uh, it is, uh, it is seeming to get busy pretty quick, so I certainly appreciate everybody has, uh, has day jobs to worry about as well, and other responsibilities, so, um, don't be shy if, uh, if you're not able to, uh, to meet a commitment. Reach out to myself or the committee as a whole, and, and we'll see, uh, what, if anything, we can do to, to help, uh, help where needed. Uh, Superintendent Morgan, your, uh, your reports.
The only piece I have outside of the Ashby busing piece that we can take on later on in the agenda is, I just wanted to let the committee know that all of our schools, um, pre-K, our elementary, middle, and high schools have all done their off-campus evacuation intruder drills at this point, they were wrapped up this week, everything went very well. The only thing that we're looking at now is whether or not some of the rally points are, are the best locations for our students. But outside of that, it's the smoothest that they have gone, um, in a number of years, so very excited about that. And all the staff are trained, so I'll leave it at that for now and, uh, hit the rest of the report later on in the agenda.
Excellent, thank you. Alright, uh, we have a number of items under new business, um, the first being the district strategic plan from Dr. Reese.
Good morning, good afternoon, evening, everyone. What time of day is it? Um, let me share my screen with you, um, if, uh, Ms. Hanson, can you give me permission to share?
You should be all set now.
You should be good now.
Okay. Are you able to see the strategic plan? So, as you know, um, the strategic plans are developed for a five-year time period. Uh, we look at kind of setting our goals for that time and establishing the benchmarks of how we're going to meet it over those five years. This is our final year of the strategic plan that was put in place in two thousand and nineteen. Um, so we're continuing, just to give everyone who's here as in the audience, background, um, there are three strategic objectives, so three main buckets that we look at. The first is around curriculum and instruction, which really involves just looking to ensure that we're continuing to implement a rigorous and relevant curriculum while strengthening instructional practices that promote purposeful student engagement and learning. And then underneath each of those objectives, there are the priorities that we have in the steps that we're going to take during that current year. So this plan is actually posted on the website, so, uh, the public can go in and see it and see the different types of action steps we're going to be taking. Um, but really, this year, as we kind of finalize this plan in the, the bucket of curriculum, what we're really looking at is just making sure we continue to have, um, common assessments, are some of our specialists, we want to make sure that the experiences that our students have, say, in the elementary schools where they're um, coming from three different communities, that they're getting similar experiences and that we have the same assessment tools to make sure that we're, we're assessing students in the same way. Um, the other big areas that we're looking at, we're continuing the implementation of our K to eight math program, um, in illustrative mathematics, as well as going into our third year of implementation of our K to eight English program, um, EL education. So we're continuing to work with teachers around freshly providing professional development and support for, um, quality implementation and, uh, what we call implementing with integrity, making sure that we're, everyone again is getting the same experiences across all grade levels, across the three communities. Um, the second bucket that we have is around meeting all the needs of all students, and that's really about making sure that all students are exposed to and have the opportunity to make success, um, with the educational experiences that we're providing to them. Um, the through, the areas, priorities underneath that, um, are about providing targeted programs and interventions that meet individual needs and provide increased opportunities for inclusion. So really, in that area, we're looking at, how are we using data from different common assessments, different interim assessments and benchmarks to make sure that we're identifying students that might need extra support? And then also providing a robust intervention system so that all students are able to, to meet those high expectations that we're setting for, for each student. Um, providing learners with educational programming and leadership opportunities that meet their individual needs. This is where we're starting to look at, and I know this year, um, I believe one of the areas the superintendent's looking at is what are we trying, what can we provide as additional opportunities, such as financial literacy opportunities for students? So making sure that the range of programming is robust and we're providing opportunities for students to demonstrate leadership in the school, so some of the, the work that we'll be doing this year really was driven by some of the civic action projects that students presented last year. So we're bringing them into the fold to help establish opportunities for them to to, to have an impact on, on what happens in the schools. Um, offering minimum of three district-wide parent information opportunities. Um, we have a schedule set up for the year, we had one earlier in the year, unfortunately, um, the weather wasn't great that evening, so it wasn't as well as attended as we would have liked, but that was one around internet safety and, um, just anti-bullying practices. Um, and then the final priority under that area is just guaranteeing that racist practices are eradicated, diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded. Really, the focus on that is making sure that all students feel included and feel like every student has an opportunity for success. So as we look at curriculum development, we're looking at how do we just, um, use tools to make sure that we're looking at equity for all students within there, within the curriculum. The third bucket area is around culture, climate, and community, um, creating a variety of opportunities to foster district-wide and cohesive climate culture and a sense of community. Um, the three areas under that, the first is around develop branding and marketing opportunities, and, you know, kudos to Ms. Ivey, who has really spearheaded a lot of this effort and, um, to re- to really promote the good things that are happening in the district. Um, I know for myself, I went on the website recently on Facebook and was just looking at how many posts have been made this year from the schools compared to previous years, and it's it's an incredible difference, um, you're, you're seeing posts almost daily from different schools about the positive things that are happening in our schools, um, as well as looking at other ways that we can promote and market NM as, as a community that people want to live in and the schools that they want to attend. Um, looking at the, um, interschool opportunities, um, for students and staff to promote a positive district-wide culture, really looking at what are we doing as kids are transitioning between schools, as well as between the schools to promote a sense of involvement and inclusion. Um, one of the activities that we did recently, um, that was promoted in the area, was just the skeleton con, or scarecrow contest. Um, so that was a nice opportunity for kids to do something that was enjoyable and to demonstrate kind of their enthusiasm and excitement and involvement in the community. And then the final priority is really looking at how do we foster community partnerships with local businesses and organizations. Um, and an example of that recently, and will continue this type of work, was the high school having a career fair and inviting in opportunities for, um, members of the community to come and speak to the students about employment in their field, and it was very well attended by our students and, um, really some positive feedback in that area. So as I said, this is our final year, so a lot of it is just kind of making sure we're continuing the trajectory of, um, meeting these objectives, and then we'll be working throughout this school year to identify the strategic plan for the next five years, which will really involve getting members of the community, students, staff involved in giving feedback and input into the development of the plan. Um, and while we're still, while it's still in the infancy phase, um, certainly looking at how do we incorporate concepts of portrait of a learner or portrait of graduate, um, and embed those concepts into the strategic plan, which looks at kind of what are those core competencies that we know beyond just academic skills, that students need to be successful as, or we believe that they need to be successful as they exit North Middlesex, and how do we, how do we teach those at the high school, but also what does it look like in the middle school and the elementary school? So that there's a room for students to be able to demonstrate and, and develop those competencies.
Thank you, Dr. Reese, any questions, comments from the committee? Alright. I guess everybody is good.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Um, what, uh, what I'd like to do if the committee is agreeable, um, I could Dr. Reese a rest as well, um, because he has the next few items, but, uh, I know we did have a few people on from, uh, from Ashby that spoke about the busing, if, uh, if there are no objections from the committee, I'd like to move down to that item next. Alright. Um, so I, I think the committee has seen a, a number of emails, um, and, and obviously we've heard from, uh, from a number of residents uh, about some busing concerns, uh, in Ashby, I think there's two core issues that I, I'd like the committee to just talk about to make sure that, um, again, we're, we're aware of, of the current situations, aware of why certain decisions have been made. Um, and then we can discuss and decide if, if anything, uh, further needs to be looked into, any other options presented or, or evaluated. Uh, so we have the bus stop locations, um, I think the, the most, uh, one we heard about tonight around the, uh, being on a busy road, no sidewalks, um, and then the bus stop is, uh, a number of hundreds of feet, I think, from, uh, from the house. And then also the morning arrival, uh, and afternoon pickup times that, uh, that there's some concern there that, that students may not all be arriving uh, on time or, or with enough time, um, to, to get, to get in the building or have breakfast, things like that, so. Wanted to open it up for the committee to discuss, I don't know if the folks had questions, uh, based on some of the emails, or if there was anything that folks wanted to, uh, understand more or have investigated more, so, uh, June, start with you.
Um, I have a, just a couple of questions to start. Um, regarding start times in the morning, um, what would happen if all of the buses, just, um, like the high school buses and middle school buses went to school five minutes earlier? Would that potentially get Ashby students to school on time? Um, if just everybody went to school, that just, you know, that five-minute difference, could we get our students to school on time? Um, so that's one question, and my second question is probably for Brad, but, um, I'm wondering in particular about the bus stop on Ringe Road, just because I'm very familiar with the area, because it's just right down the street over here. Um, that area is set up sort of on a triangle, and right now, the bus turns around kind of at the edge of a triangle, so it picks up students at, at the bus stop and fully turns around there and then comes back this direction. Where there is a full triangle, um, and the house in question is kind of at the end of that um, road, which is only, I, I forget how many, uh, a half-mile, third-of-mile away, um, has a time study been done looking at just driving that triangle? You, if the bus would have to drive into Ashburnham for a minute, but then could pick up directly in front of, um, Shelley Jones's house and come back around, so we would be avoiding the current turnaround, we would be avoiding a potential additional turnaround and just do a loop. And it seems like it wouldn't take any extra time to do that and, uh, potentially even save time where the bus wouldn't be turning around where it is currently. Um, so I don't know if that option's been looked at yet, but, um, if not, I think that would be a good idea. Um, but honestly, my biggest comment is that we pay the bus company an awful lot of money to get these kids to school. So they can't really, I, I can't understand how they can pick and choose which kids that are gonna get to school and which kids they're not gonna get to school, because we're contracted and they, that, they have one job, you know, they, they just need to get the kids to school and back. Um, uh, and I guess, uh, to follow up with that question, we do get paid a good percentage back, um, Uh, and I guess, uh, to follow up with that question, we do get paid a good percentage back. Um, I know we were getting, it was lower before and higher last year, like in the in the ninety percent or so. So where we talk about the cost of an additional bus, what would the true cost to the district be once we get reimbursed? Um, so I guess that's all my questions.
Okay, so let me try to answer those. I'll start first with with the start time. Um, and I'll address the elementary start time first, even though it wasn't a part of your question. Um, the eight forty-five to nine to nine AM window is something that's been, it's been in existence for many years. It's something that is consistent at all of our elementary schools. And it's really in place. You know, again, to provide students the opportunity to get some breakfast. And if they get there, you know, right up against homeroom to get breakfast and go to homeroom. So it's it's more in place for breakfast than it is for anything else. The the nine AM to three oh five, um, is really nine AM is homeroom, three oh five is the end of the school day. Uh, and that still obviously puts us well within the time and learning aspect. If we were to address the start times at either Hawthorne Brook or the high school, that would, um, that would, that would definitely be subject to collective bargaining. It would be a change in working conditions, uh, most likely. So that's something that we would have to talk about in the next contract. It's not something that we can just, um, that we can just change, um, because again, it would be a change in working conditions. But certainly something we can look at in the next round of, um, collective bargaining, which is what we're starting, um, officially next week after just doing the ground rules this week. Ringe Road, I I actually spoke with the bus company, uh, this afternoon, um, with with the owner. And as I mentioned in an email to the committee, I've been out there a couple of times myself. Nancy Haynes has been out there. The the problem with Ringe Road is that, um, it it to to find a safe turnaround, they would in essence have to go into Ashburnham to do to to turn around safely according to DBUS. And that would add five to seven minutes on to the arrival time at at the next location. So if they were dropping off a middle school student, that would add five to seven minutes on to the arrival time at Ashby Elementary, which is already late. So that would certainly be a problem. Um, I know that it was mentioned that a the driveway close by could be used for the turnaround. But when the bus company tried it, the bottom of the bus scraped because of the incline on the driveway. So that's not something that the bus company is willing to do. So the the only concern, again, I'm I'm just sharing the information that I have, is that we do have many students, um, that are not picked up at home. And obviously, they have to get, they have to find their way to a bus stop. Ringe Road is a busy road. I absolutely agree there. It's 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 dangerous. Um, there's no sidewalk. It's not a great situation. And that that's certainly not something that I'm that I'm arguing. I'm just sharing that if we change the stop, it's going to add five to seven minutes on to the arrival time at Ashby Elementary. The final piece, and I think this is the last part of the question, is in order to be reimbursed for a school bus, um, the district in essence has to prove that our buses are full. Elementary loads can carry up to seventy-seven students. Our largest bus in Ashby right now holds forty forty students. And that number drops significantly at the middle and high school level. So we, I mean, right now, we're being reimbursed for buses that you could argue aren't reimbursable. And adding another school bus would, to me, be completely on the district to cover. A school bus would be about eighty thousand dollars per year to add on to the to the budget. So it's it's a significant amount. The other piece with that is at this point in time, I don't know if D has another bus because most bus companies lease their buses, and then you have to find a driver, which is extremely difficult to do in this market. So just sharing that information now, again, uh, the reimbursement rate is usually around seventy-five percent for those that live, uh, beyond a mile and a half from the school. But adding another bus at this point in time, I I don't see, um, I I don't see how that is feasible, um, or doable at this point in time, especially where we just got a warning from the state last week saying that if we did have money in revolving funds that we wanted to pay very close attention to, setting that aside, because things could get very, very tight the second half of FY twenty-four. Did that answer all of the questions?
For the most part, I'm still absorbing some of it, but, um, my question about Ringe Road would be to actually do a loop to eliminate the current turnaround and eliminate the second proposed turnaround that would add five to seven minutes and just go straight up Crocker Road, loop into Townsend, not Townsend, excuse me, um, Ashburnham, and then turn back onto Ringe Road. It's a very small triangle. Like I'll, I pick up eggs from her farm, actually, and sometimes instead backing up, I just drive that loop because it's easier to just do the loop. So it seems like it would, eliminating those turnarounds would, it would kind of break even time-wise.
So I I hate to put Nancy Haynes on the spot, but she's very familiar with Ashby, and she has had more regular communication with with DBUS. And I I would have, I I'm going to guess that this has probably been looked at, but Nancy, I I can't say for sure if, um, rerouting that particular bus has been looked at around Ringe Road. Do you know if that has been looked at?
Yeah, I think, um, we did speak about this, um, and I'm trying to remember the name of that left turn. So you're if I'm looking at it, you're you're proposing a left turn onto, um, not Crocker, what's the the road, um, June, that we're talking about?
Straight on Crocker, turning onto Russell Hill and coming back down Wilker.
Wilker, that's it. That was the, I'm sorry, I was having trouble remembering that. I think, um, you know, the I believe the issue was the left turn, the angle of the the Wilker Road turn, but, um, I'm certainly able to reconfirm that. That's my memory about it, which which is, you know, it's a longer bus to make that left. Um, so I think they were hesitant about that, especially in the winter, down Wilker and then back down Crocker. You know, I don't want to I don't want to speak to it, but I I I think I think that's something we could relook at. Um, I'm always willing to reach back out to them about it. Um, but I think it had to do with the angle onto Wilker.
Okay, that
I just wanted to
triangle there, but I mean, I, if somebody could look at it, I, you know, and and maybe just do a time study on it, I think it would be worth it. Sorry, Brad, I didn't want to.
Oh, no, no problem. I and I did speak again with with the representatives from D today. They they are more than willing to continue to look at this. Um, the problem that that they're saying they're going to encounter is a later arrival time, which which is obviously, um, makes an already difficult situation certainly more difficult. I did want to, um, possibly because I don't know if it's going to be brought up, bring up the Davis Road piece as well. I don't know if now's now's a good time.
I'm done my questions for now. Whatever, correct thing.
Yeah, I I don't know if, uh, I know Justin and Randy and David, I don't know if it's related to that or or if you want to share more. All right, Jessica?
Um, my comment was on Davis Road. I do agree with the public speaker. That road is not okay for students to be walking up and down. It's the shortcut up to Country Mile where they sell a lot of liquor. And I agree with her that there's nips all over. I used to have a friend that used to live on that road. And it is a very dangerous road. I don't know if any of you have been down that road, but it's not something where I would want a student walking, much less an elementary school student walking down that road.
So the the only thing I can add to that again, and this is just a follow-up, um, where Ringe is more like a five to seven-minute, um, delay, uh, this road would be about a seven to ten-minute delay. D fully recognizes that they have traveled that road in the past. But previously, the the routes made sense for it to travel the entire route, for it to travel the entire road. Now it only makes sense to go up to the, to to go up to this bus stop and turn around, which which is not possible according to D. Again, I've I've driven up the road a couple of times myself. I've never driven a bus. You know, it it is, um, you know, it certainly can be narrow in certain spots. Uh, it can be hilly, uh, and again, this is during a time when there is no snow on the road. There aren't snowbanks on the side of the road. So that is something that has to be considered. And the other piece we have to consider really at both locations is that, um, really two things is that we often have substitute bus drivers, um, you know, that is, that is a regular occurrence. So we have people that may be, um, unfamiliar with the routes covering on certain days. And those that are more experienced may be able to do a better job at this. But again, right now, there's no way to turn around on Davis Road. You'd have to actually travel Davis Road completely. And in order for that to happen, they would have to reroute at minimum two buses. So that would change a minimum of two buses pickup times and potentially some bus stops as well. D is willing to do it, um, but it is something that the committee needs to consider because it it may very well, um, create some other issues. The only other piece that I again, and and I I would agree with Jess, Davis Road is a dangerous road. The, uh, the the location, I believe, between the house and the bus stop is point seven miles, where Ringe is point three. So it is a longer distance. But the issue remains is that we still have a large number of students in the district that have to get to bus stops every day that are not, um, that that may or may not be close to their homes. So just sharing that. And I don't disagree with either parent. I I think both locations are very challenging.
Thank you, Brad. Randy?
So my my original comment that I raised my hand for was not necessarily to address these particular roads. I'm not familiar with each either one of them. You know, personally, I've probably been down one or two of them a couple of times, but nothing to be able to speak to these roads. My thought was, is there any way that we can set up a safe bus stop for the kids to stand at? Like the superintendent said, there are other places where the students go to the end of their roads to get picked up or different bus stops. I don't know if there's a safe place on these roads, at least in the meantime, until we can figure out everything for these kids to be standing and waiting for the bus and then to be picked up. Um, again, I don't know the roads. Um, that's certainly, um, at least an interim solution to keeping these kids safe, um, if they can be driven to a safe place to to stay. As far as what was just recently said about Davis Road's been before, I would take a look at, or I'd be willing to take a look at, um, rerouting a couple of buses. If it will still work, um, if if Davis Road has been used before and can still be used, if there's, there hasn't been any degradation of that road, that would say that they can't. Just to see what the effect would be on everything. Just again, um, trying to keep, you know, balancing out, uh, what we can do, what's safe for the bus drivers and what's actually really safe for the students.
So, um, the the only thing is, um, as far as rerouting, we can certainly, if the committee would like us to have D look at that, that's certainly something we can do. And, you know, we can certainly try to figure out what that impact would be. Not in having been to both locations is the only viable bus stop for Ringe Road is the current location that it's at right now. Again, it is point three miles from the home, but it is a busy point three miles. Davis Road, if I remember correctly, the only, the the next road off of Davis Road is West Meadow, I believe, which ties into Townsend. I don't believe there is any other road off of Davis Road. So any other, um, any other bus stop on Davis Road would still require a turnaround at some point, which the bus company there is not comfortable turning around anywhere on Davis Road. As of now, they would have to drive to West Meadow and turn around there and then come back down or start the route at the top of West Meadow, drive down Davis, and then and then do the rest of the route from there. The problem is, is it's kind of the way that the the routes are in that area, it's kind of doing a lot of backtracking, um, is 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 part of the route. So it's not a smooth, it would not be a smooth route. The other thing I don't know quite honestly is, um, what impact, um, D said there is an impact, but what impact the closure of Turnpike is doing to the arrival, um, times of buses at the schools. D is saying that that is having an impact because they have to avoid Turnpike altogether. Is part of the, um, the 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 daily trips, uh, to and from Ashby. Um, so so that's certainly a problem as well. And I'm not sure what the timeframe is on that. I thought I heard the end of the month, but, um, that was a while ago, and I'm not sure if that has been, if that has changed.
Thank you, Brad. Sorry, June.
Yeah, I could just speak to Turnpike quick. It is slated to be finished in November. Um, and going through recently, it it appears to be very close to done. So I do think that would change things a lot once that road reopened.
I hope so.
Thank you, June. David?
Sorry. Uh, so this is just for, um, especially people who are watching, um, but, uh, how many bids did we get for our most recent bus contract?
One.
And how many times did we put out for it?
We put out for it at the start of every contract, so we're putting, we're preparing to put it out again now because our contract is expiring for both special ed and and, uh, regular education.
Right, and we put it out twice the last time too, right?
Um, I believe so. Is that correct, Nancy? Didn't we, didn't we try to follow up and get additional bids? I I don't, it was, it was five years ago.
We had a a number of, uh, companies pull the requests, the the bid documents. Um, and so we were, we thought we might get multiple bids, but in this case, we didn't. So I I we did not do more than one bid. It's a kind of arduous process to uh, get the whole bid process done. So no, we did not.
Yeah. So, um, I guess just the point that I'm trying to make is that every time we do one of these, you know, bids for buses, we only ever get back one bid. And we're really left to the whims of of Dean and everybody else. And so it really puts us into, you know, we don't, we don't have any other options. Um, not that this makes it any easier for the parents. Your concerns are incredibly valid. You know, and and they're not lost on us. Um, I know that doesn't make it any better, but I want you to know that you're being heard at least, so.
And and I do want to add that, um, that the D has, uh, has been working with Nancy and myself. And in trying to come up with a solution, unfortunately, all of the solutions seems seem to have other, um, other effects. So there's, there's no easy solution. If there were, it would have already have been made. So I I just wanted to to point that out as well. You know, I've been dealing primarily with, um, with the two owners at at D. I know Nancy has as well, and and they've been trying to come up with ways to fix this. Um, the the problem is, is that it's a large land area, um, which which we all know. There are four buses, um, and all of the homes are pretty spread out. And there are definitely challenges when it comes to, um, you know, a lot of other places are able to call on neighbors to help out and things like that. And a lot of the locations in Ashby, that's really not a viable option because it is so spread out. And, you know, in some cases, there may not be a neighbor nearby, um, with a school-aged child where you're able to help each other out. So just just putting that out there.
Brad, how many, um, these are two different routes, correct? The 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 two streets we've talked about are two different bus routes?
Yes, A three and A four. So there are four Ashby buses, A three and A four.
Also, also different tiers. The ones in Ashby Elementary delivery and one is to Hawthorne Brook.
I know we talked about, uh, bus capacity at the start. Do we know approximately how full these two buses are for? I guess there, I go, what's the maximum capacity of of any route that those actual buses do?
Sure. So the the maximum capacity is seventy-seven students. A three has forty and A four has thirty-five.
And is there a I think I know the answer to this, but is there a smaller bus that could be used and have that be maybe at capacity, but smaller footprint? smaller footprint? So it's easier to turn around?
So I, that I'm not sure of. I will say that you mean using a smaller bus or one of those buses? I don't know if it would hold. I'm not sure if it would hold the appropriate number of students because they happen to be, you know, again, forty and thirty-five. I can check with Dee. I'm also not sure if they have a half bus under lease right now. That's up to use.
Yeah, Brad, they're using one in West Townsend for some of those roads, which again are similar. I believe it's, I believe I need to double check that it's, what does go up to West Meadow.
I'm just not sure if they have another one.
Yeah, they probably don't have one sitting, you know, sitting around not being used. But yeah, that's maybe a future choice for one of the routes.
Okay. Then my other question is around the, I know, I know the, the high level guidelines that were referenced earlier are set by the state, but who actually makes the determination on where a bus stop is, how far it is from the students being picked up? Is that Dee bus makes that determination when they do the routes? Do we have a part in that or?
We can, we can influence where the routes are and how, you know, I usually use their advice because they, they're the ones making these, navigating these roads. And it's not, it's not easy to find the right to keep reducing. We've reduced buses over the past five or six years. I think we've gone down two buses across the district, not, not all in Ashby. So, you know, they do try to make adjustments every year. And we can, we can influence, you know, in our contract, we're allowed to have some control over the routes. Team effort.
Yeah. And part of the issue too is, is that we did have a, but we were, part of this year's budget was, included a reduction of another bus. And we were looking at where that reduction could be made. And ultimately we could not reduce it. So the bus, it never came to fruition. So that bus is still, is still in operation and it's still being used. But it's, it's certainly a challenge every year when it comes to transportation because the bus stops change often. You have new kindergarten, new kindergarteners starting in different locations. And it certainly, it certainly is a challenge.
And then just my last question before June, we get back to you is around the, the cost of buses. Is that a shared cost across the districts or does each town? Is that why part of the regional agreement, each town covers the cost of the buses for their students? Or is it just split evenly across the district?
I'll take that one. So the total cost of the busing is calculated in full, both specialized and regular ed. Then we read, we subtract from that any of the state estimates on what we're going to receive for state aid. And the difference is split based on enrollment. So it's not a per bus per town calculation. It's the total, the total remaining due is split according to enrollment. So theoretically that works. That it's by town. They pay for their buses. I guess we'd have to do the math specifically, but it's about that.
All right. I guess that was just the last thing I'll say. I mean, I spoke to a couple of parents. I've spent a lot of time on Google Maps navigating it. I mean, I, I'll echo Dave's comments that it's, it's a very difficult situation. Hopefully we can find some path forward, but it's, it's a balance of safety, convenience and, and budget, unfortunately. And those are, those are three hard things to all satisfy. So we'll have to, we'll have to continue the conversation. June?
Yeah, maybe somebody could refresh my memory because I know when my students were at AES, they were on bus A six. Did we have six buses in Ashby at the time? Or was it just numbered differently? Like, did we reduce Ashby buses in the last few years?
I was just gonna pull that up. Give me one second. Okay, June?
No problem. I'll just move to my next comment for a minute. So I hadn't been thinking about Turnpike Road until somebody just mentioned that. And I'm sure we have students on both lower Turnpike and upper Turnpike, which can't be passed through completely right now. So I'm assuming it's two different buses, or maybe the bus is going a very long way around that. So where someone talked about looking at rerouting all of the buses, and now would be an ideal time if that road is opening within the month or so anyway, but would probably make a lot of sense to look at rerouting to maximize our, our time on the roads where that will, should be opening up very soon. And then my last comment, I know public comment is over, but Karen Stewart has had her hand up for a while. So I don't know if there's any other information that maybe the committee should know. So I'm just going to leave that up to you, Craig, if you want to call on her, but I wanted to point that out to you.
Yeah, I didn't notice that. There's no objections from the committee. I'm happy to to allow that. All right. All right, Karen, it should be good. I hope I did that right.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, awesome. I know you guys are busy and I apologize to take up another moment of your time, even though it's over, but I think what's important to address is no one has addressed this again, since the road has been paved, which was just recently, which is where now the road has the width and the ability to definitely handle a bus much more safely if supposedly it wasn't before. I will also say that me and my husband out of our own pockets have paid for the end of our driveway to be paved just recently as well, to accommodate a school bus, because that's how important this is to us and our family. We didn't pave the entire thing. We paved only the end and enough for the bus, the length of the bus. And we actually spoke to the highway department, Steve, to find out what the length should be for that to be accommodated if supposedly the bus cannot travel down Davis. I did provide June with my old bus route. And the reason I did that is because I reviewed my old bus route, which I remember, obviously I rode it for years. I did review it with the current bus route. That bus route hits every single stop that is currently on the bus. Instead of it going down Wheeler, it goes back down Davis like it used to. So the only thing is for people to actually take a second to run that route and just see that it does actually hit everything. I'm trying to cover every single one of my bases because this is how important this is to me. I understand budgets. I understand everything. But the safety of my kid is not going to be not taken into consideration by the district just because of money. I don't have the ability to drive my kids to school every day, just like anybody else. I certainly am not going to send my kid to Townsend. I think it's disgusting that that was even an option. I just want to mention real quick that when we did pave our driveway, we also have a forty-foot fifth wheel trailer that we back up our driveway. So the consideration of width was already there because we safely are able to do that. And lastly, my old bus route, where we were so concerned about turnarounds, even though we did pave our driveway for that to be an option, if they did actually take a second to go down Davis Road first, instead of Wheeler, there would be no turnarounds for that bus anymore. That bus would go down Davis, pick up everywhere and go straight to the elementary school with not one turnaround anymore. And that's all. If I could also, I did, obviously, I know everyone was kind of mentioning as well what they did. I was encouraged by Desi to file a complaint, which I did. Our town, our state representative is informed of this and they were very supportive as well. Our local police chief, town administration and the highway department were all a very big part of this with me. And I've been trying really hard. And I just want to make it known that they were all very supportive and disgusted with the fact that anyone would allow a kid to walk Davis Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anything else from the committee? All right. So I guess we'll continue to, oh, June?
I'm, I'm sorry. I know Nancy was looking to see what Ashby buses have been cut in the past.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Well, the, I did pull up the bid specs. We did have six buses when we started the contract running for Ashby students. What I need to do is go through and make sure that all six were running an Ashby Elementary, a three-tiered route. And then going to the high school, middle and Ashby E. If you look at bus routes today, they're, which are on the website, right down at the bottom on the furry, on the homepage, you'll see that we actually have five buses in Ashby, but only four routes that go to Ashby Elementary. So depending on what school we're talking about, would depend on if it's for, you know, four buses going to that school or, or a different number. But I just wanted to bring that up. Not all, not every bus does a three-tier route right now. And that was, we did some of that to alleviate when, when buses were adjusted so that, for instance, sometimes they might do just the high school and Ashby Elementary and skip the middle school run. So depending on what we're talking about, I think that's, I guess my short, short answer is. And what I need to do is go back and look, when in 2019, when we went out to bid last time, whether we were running three tiers for all schools or not. And, and I can get those through you. Probably the easiest way is just to give you that information so you can look at it.
I did just want to add to, to just to the, to the ridership comment as far as the number of buses that we've had. And I'm sure everyone knows that the district population has dropped significantly in the past twenty years. So certainly, you know, the buses have dropped. But one of the reasons we've been looking to drop buses and why it was a part of last year's discussion, and it's something that you can really see every day at our elementary and middle schools, is the significant number of parents who are driving now. And that's something that, that certainly ticked up during COVID and has really not gone away. We thought it would drop off. I'm not sure if students got used to their parents driving them. But that's one of the reasons why our buses are, aren't filled anywhere near capacity in some cases, just because of the traffic going in and out of our ele- elementary and middle schools on a daily basis with student drop off. So that's another thing that the district does have to consider is if the ridership continues to drop off and we're not filling our buses, then reimbursement could be, could be a bigger problem down the road.
Thank you, Brad. In terms of next steps, what I guess, what are the open items either for this committee or the administration to, to be working out with us? Do we holding where we're at? Or is there some actions for, for follow-up to, to talk to the bus company again or?
Well, we can certainly check with regard to Davis. Check out Ms. Stewart's driveway. They have Dee take a look at that to see if it's possible to turn around. As I mentioned earlier, Dee Dee certainly used to drive the road prior to it being paved. But again, that was just driving the complete road. There wasn't a turnaround involved. And that's not, unfortunately, that's not necessary at this point in time unless a change is made to accommodate the kindergarten. And again, I fully agree with what everyone said. It's a, it's, it's a dangerous road. It's, it's very difficult. So we can certainly look at that. And we will also look at whether or not we can reroute it and what the impact would be now with Turnpike opening up the end of the, at some point in time in November, will that alleviate some of the issues in Ashby with Turnpike being reopened? So we can examine that, take a, take a look at that. And as far as Ringe Road goes, again, we can look at possibly that triangle piece that June was talking about. I know Nancy's a little bit more familiar with it than I am as far as which roads are involved. And also look to see if a smaller school bus is something that's available to us and would that hold for the elementary school students? I'm not sure what the capacity is on the smaller school buses to see if we can switch to that. But again, that's going to come with, I think any solution is going to come potentially with the delay. But Turnpike Road could alleviate a lot of that, especially with the Davis Road situation. So those are the things we can certainly take a look at.
All right. Shelley, I'll give you sixty seconds if you, if you want. And then I would, do you want to wrap this up?
Thank you very much. I just want to make it clear that everybody on this meeting understands that right now, my husband and I both are due at work before our children are supposed to be picked up by the bus. And we don't get home from work until after they get dropped off by the bus. Our only option to get our children down to Ringe, turn, Ringe, Crocker and Piper is that my fifth and sixth grader walk this road. I urge every single one of you to go on Google Maps and look at it or drive this road. It is not an option. To say that my kid's safety is not worth figuring out a five to seven minute difference in a bus route is appalling because I know none of you would ever, ever want this done to your children. It needs to be resolved. It's five to seven minutes. And there are so many options. They're just not being looked at. I cannot ask my kids to walk to that bus stop. And I am not going to ask my community members to get my kids on and off the bus five days a week for the next eight years while my kids are in this district. Thank you.
All right, I might have been muted. So thank you, Shelley. Any last comments from the committee? Lisa?
Yeah. Is there any way that we could switch possibly the smaller bus in Townsend to the Ashby? Like, and give Townsend the bigger bus to accommodate everyone?
At least I think the reason the smaller bus is being used is because it's the only bus that'll fit down that street in Townsend. It's not being used because of capacity. It's used, you know, exterior dimensions.
For the Townsend to also, okay. Okay.
Maybe you think that's again, just looking into if the bus company has another small bus or if there's options there because if turning around is the big concern, that might alleviate that. All right. Seeing no other questions, comments, we'll continue to to work on that. And again, appreciate everybody's feedback and input into this. I wish there was an easy answer. But we'll continue to look into it. Next up, we had the, do you have a question, June? Sorry.
I was just wondering if we'll have this on another agenda again, or just expect like an email follow-up from the superintendent? Or how will we know what kind of closure happens?
Yeah, I would, I guess I'd ask, that's a good question. I'd ask the whether Brad, Nancy, I'm not sure if one, when the team would look into that, but just to send the committee an update. And if the committee wants to pursue something that gets presented or it's, it's not what we expected, whatever happens to be, then we can, we can certainly put it on a future agenda. But yeah, I we'll just have to see what, what comes out of the, the ongoing conversations. Next, I do want to jump. And it's not on the agenda, so I'll yield back to my chairperson's report and yield my time to Ms. Rebecca Sylvester, our student rep, to provide a student report. And then we'll get back to the, the business on the agenda. So welcome, Rebecca. And I'll turn it over to you for a minute.
Hello. So recently we had our homecoming dance and our pep rally at our school to kind of raise school spirit and everything. And it was a success. Most of the school was at, attended the dance. So that was really good to get everyone out there. And our next big event is Veterans Day, where we're doing a presentation and breakfast for veterans on November eighth at eight thirty. And invitations have gone out and are still going out this week. And then after that, we're having our annual powder puff game on November fourteenth at five PM for the community to come to. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate it. I can say my son had a lot of fun with the homecoming activities. So it was, it was good. I can say my son had a lot of fun with the homecoming activities, so it was, it was good. Um, okay, twenty twenty-three MCAS results and accountability back to Dr. Reese.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again, everyone. Um, Ms. Camo is going to project the presentation with me. I had to switch to my phone. If you can just let me know when that comes up. There we go.
We can, uh, we can see it now.
Excellent. So um, as you know, each year we share out um both the MCAS and this year the accountability results. Um, Ms. Camo, if you can go to the next slide. Next slide, please. So, and I'm gonna just. So two thousand twenty-three was actually the first year since two thousand nineteen. That the accountability measures included both an accountability percentile, which is a comparative measure with other schools in the state. As well as a progress towards targets, which is more about an individual look at how schools are performing uh in various indicators. Statewide this year, the results showed continued academic recovery from the pandemic. So as, as you know, we've talked about the past couple of years, there was the dip that we saw in our scores. Um, last year, we talked about how we started to see them flatten out. And um, this year statewide, they're starting to see some sense of recovery back to um. Free two thousand nineteen test results. Um, eighty-three percent of schools in the Commonwealth have an accountability designation of not requiring assistance or intervention. I'll talk about what that, that means and where our schools are. Um, sixty-two percent of schools met, exceeded, or made significant progress towards targets for the accountability targets. And that's that second indicator, the progress towards targets. And then we did have sixty-six schools in the Commonwealth that were identified as schools of recognition. Um, for their, either their overall growth and/or their overall achievement. Um, Ms. Camo, you can go to the next slide. So the progress towards targets, um, it's a measure of the district's performance towards um improvement targets. So each year, the state takes a look at our data. And they have front for the different indicators which you see below, anywhere from achievement to growth. Um, EL proficiency for our English language learners, absenteeism. Advanced coursework, which includes both AP courses, but it also includes uh courses such as the progress. The, that PLTW, Project Lead the Way Program for Science and Technology. Um, and then high school, there's some additional indicators. They look at both the four-year graduation rate. The five-year graduation rate and annual dropout rate. So what they do is based on our performance from the prior school year, they set targets for us um. To work towards um to achieve for the upcoming school year. Um, Ms. Camo, you can go to the next slide. And basically, the, the targets, we get point value for the different targets. And as you can see, they range anywhere from zero points or earned up to four points earned. And over to the, you can see the reason, anywhere from the decline in the score, no change in the score. That we improved, but we didn't improve um to, to meet the target. We met the target or we exceeded the target. Next slide, Ms. Camo. Um. And what they do with those is they total them up and then they wait them out um to, to identify what our um. Progress towards target score is. Um, so as you can see on this chart, for non-high schools. Um, sixty percent of the weighting is on the achievement, so are the scores that students receive on their MCAS. For math, ELA, and science, technology. Twenty percent is based on student growth, so we have growth measures in math and ELA. And what a growth measure is, it looks at where the student was the prior school year. And it measures their progress on the following school year of MCAS testing to determine, did they grow? How did they grow compared to other schoo- students that had similar scores to them the previous school year? Um, EL proficiency is not something um that. We have an indicator for um at the, at our level because um we don't have individual school. Um, ratings for that, because we don't have enough of a population of EL students at any one school to get a rating, but we do get that rating. For at the high school level, and then the additional indicators that I mentioned earlier. Um, and as you can see, you can look at the, the different ratings or um. Um, weightings for the high school school, schools. Once they do all those calculations, they look and say, how, how are we meeting, working towards meeting our growth targets? And you can go to the next slide, Ms. Camo. So as you can see, um, for this past school year of testing, all of our schools, um, except for Hawthorne Brook Middle School. Um, received an overall classification of not requiring assistance or intervention. Um, Hawthorne Brook did receive a requiring assistance or intervention um classification. And on a further slide, I'll talk about why that, why that happened and what steps were taken. Um, so first, I want to do celebrate um Ashby Elementary School because, as I said earlier. Only sixty-six schools in the Commonwealth were identified as uh schools of recog- recognition. Ashby Elementary is one of them. So um, I know the superintendent put out something earlier to celebrate that. But we certainly want to recognize the accomplishments of both the students and the staff. Um, and Ms. Cromwell Gap as the principal for, for leading the work over there. And the, the hard work that was done and for them to have received that recognition. Um, as I mentioned, Hawthorne Brook was identified as um for targeted improvement. And that account classification was based solely on the low participation rate for one subgroup, our Hispanic Latino subgroup. So that subgroup had thirty-one students. And because some families or some um opted their children out of testing, uh, we had three students that were opted out of testing. We fell below the required participation rate for that particular subgroup. And as a result, we, the school got the designation, so it wasn't. Related to their scores or any other data beyond just the participation rate uh for that particular subgroup. Um, what the challenging part is when you have a subgroup that that's, that's size so small. One or two students uh really had the impact of making us drop below that participation rate. Um, certainly, we take that uh seriously and we, we put in some action steps in place. So we applied for a family partnership grant. Um, this is a grant through DESI. And um, there's two pathways that the grant could um fit for. One was increasing the pipeline of um. Ball parent volunteers, bringing parent volunteers into the community, into the schools. And developing a program where they then, we help them to become substitute teachers in the districts. And also paraprofessionals, so trying to increase some of those shortages and challenges that we face in the district. But the other pathway was really around targeting a specific subgroup and helping to look at how do we better involve. And increase parental involvement and support from, from different subgroups. And so for, if we do get the grant, we're going to focus on both, both pathways. But the second pathway will be focused specifically working with Hawthorne Brook to how do we better engage uh families from different subgroups. Um, Ms. Olmstead has also um working, she's working on reviewing and updating the school improvement plan. To address specifically uh student attendance and participation for MCAS testing. And what actions we can take when families do um express the interest of opting out. Um. We also are participating as a district in um an English language. English learner education and world language education leadership network. And this is really um driven by DESI, but it's an opportunity for us to. Meet with and learn from and share practices with other districts who have. Similar populations of EL students and how do we support those students? Um, and finally, we're, we're looking at the prac- the practices that we have for working with families who opt out of MCAS testing. So we do have each year and um some families that do opt out their students. And we provide them a letter following the, their opt-out. But we just want to make sure, are there any other practices that we can put in place when a family does? Express an interest in opting their child out of the testing? What can we do to support them and help them better understand the implications? That it may have for their children as well as for the school. For example, um. Opting out, the implications that it may have for their ability to receive scholarships of later on, such as the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Um, so it might impact their ability for their child to get their scholarship when they're in high school. And when there is the, the graduation requirement to take the MCAS testing. So we just want to look at those practices and make sure we've got everything in place to best identify and support and help families. Understand those decisions that they, they are making. Um, so accountability percentiles, um. This is a normative component. It's compared to other schools, their grade. Um, and basically, the way, the best way to think of a percentile is if you had a hundred people standing in line. Where, like, for example, if I look at Ashby Elementary, it has an accountability percentile of sixty-three. So that means that their performance and their data were better than sixty-three percent of the schools in the Commonwealth. Um, at, that had similar grade levels. Um, it's important to note that with accountability percentiles, um, elementary and middle are clustered together into one group. And high school is its own grouping. So now if we take a look at the actual data for this year for MCAS results. This first slide, and I won't go through reading each of the numbers, but you can take a look. Basically, what the slide shows is the performance of our students at each grade level from two thousand twenty-one. The students that either met or exceeded um expectations on the testing. Although, and then two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, looking at the change between the last two years. Um, for both North Middlesex and North Middlesex data is in blue, and then the state data is in that kind of. Orange-y type color. Um, so you can see how, how we compare in terms of both. The percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding the standards as well as the change from the prior year to the current year.
Yeah, I have a, sorry, I have a quick question on that.
Sure.
Okay, so I, I just, to be clear, so the, when it says in two thousand twenty-one. Third grade, those become the fourth graders in two thousand twenty-two, so it, it continues to move up the scale.
Correct, correct, correct.
Um, and then where would our students who were, I guess we would say, most impacted by COVID, where do they fit in this band at this point? Like, what grade would they be?
So, you know, I think what, what we're finding is this, you know. Obviously, COVID had an impact on all students, but I think the ones that had the greatest impact were those students at the lower grade levels. Um, that didn't get the opportunity to come into school and learn those skills and strategies that. Get taught so well by our kindergarten, first grade, second grade teachers. So those students would be. We'd start to see them in probably that twenty-two, twenty-three data for grade three. Um, it's, so really that, that first band, that first uh row of scores is, is where we're most seeing the students that. Um, I think had the greatest, that were impacted the most by COVID.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. And so the next slide just takes a look at um our subgroups. Because we always want to look fir- first at how all of our students are performing. But then as we dig deeper into the data, we want to take a closer look at. How is, how are our various subgroups performing? And so this, this slide presents the data for where they were in two thousand nineteen. In terms of meeting, exceeding expectations, and then two thousand twenty-three. And then again, the change between the years. Um, so as you can see, we're starting to make some gains. Um, from, we've kind of hit that plateau where it's leveled out. And we're starting to see a little bit of recovery from the scores. And then the same thing, um, I just broke out, so grades three through eight, the subgroups. And this slide shows the subgroups for grade ten in terms of ELA. So. Student growth scores, um, when we talk about student growth scores, again, um. Growth scores are a reflection of the level of improvement that a student makes. So what it is, it's comparing the student to other students that had a similar profile. Um, similar score from the previous year and measuring the level of growth that the students made. And then again, if you think of kind of putting a hundred students in a line. If a student gets a growth score of fifty, that means that they performed. Their growth from last year to this year, what was better than fifty students who had a similar score the prior school year. And as you look at our growth scores, um, that last bullet, the two thousand, two thousand twenty-three ELA student growth score averages. As you can see, they range anywhere from forty-two up to fifty-six. When you look at growth scores as a statistical measure. Anywhere from forty to sixty is considered to be within the average range. As you get to the higher end of that sixty, it's like um. High average, as you get lower to the forties, it's a, it's lower average, but they all fall within the average range, all fall within expected growth. So just in terms of key takeaways from that ELA data, um, what we're seeing is some of the shifts are consistent. From our school with the state results, uh, we're seeing some plateauing as well as the signs of recovery towards the two thousand nineteen scores. Um, in two thousand twenty-three, North Middlesex students performed at, at, at or better than the state average in eight, in eight. Out of the ten, um. Excuse. I'm sorry, grades three, four, seven, eight, and ten, and within all subgroup categories. Um, when we look at action steps, um, as we started to analyze this data, both at the district level as well as um individual school level. Uh, we want, we're working on just the continued implementation of the EL, EL program. Um, we've introduced the early literacy skills block um part of EL this year, so that's something new for our K to two teachers. And we think that it has a strong connection with the English Language Arts Program they're currently using. And it will address some of those foundational skills that we're seeing some of the kids struggling with. Um, we're using greater use of assessment data to drive instruction, so we've had the I Ready. Um, we've had IXL, and now we're spending more time really digging deeper into that with teachers and looking at how to use that data. To inform your intervention groups. Um, and this year, through the curriculum office, we are also having a focus on high-quality instructional practices. And making sure that it's a district-wide conversation so that as students are learning these, as teachers are applying these. They get them every year rather than just being focused within one, one grade level or one content area. So our math scores, as you, I, you know, I'll give you a second to look at these, but this is the same setup. Uh, it shows the, from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three. The students that met or exceeded their standard, the expectations on the testing as well as the change from twenty-two to twenty-three. Um, both for North Middlesex and the state. Um, one of the. Grade levels I do want to highlight is grade four, which looks like from twenty-two to twenty-three, um, there was a, a significant drop. But I think if you look at two thou- I think two thousand twenty-two for whatever isn't for that year for that grade level. We saw like a, a big increase. So if you look at from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three. Um, it's, it's not as much of a drop, um, but it's still something we want to look at. Um. Go to the next slide. Um, we did the same thing, looking at the subgroups, uh, both for grades three, grades three through eight. Um. And we did the same, going to the next slide, uh, for grade ten. So some of the key takeaways, um, that we did see a slight decline in overall math scores from twenty-two to twenty-three in grades three through eight. I think that was largely impacted by the, the drop um on the grade six scores from last year. Um, we do see a decline in the math scores from grade, in grade ten from twenty-two to twenty-three. Um, so some of the things we're looking at, um, you may recall last year, I talked about when we were implementing the EL program. I shared some information and some research about the, kind of the phenomena of an implementation dip. And really what that speaks to is when you're implementing a new program. There's, there's going to be a dip in student performance while teachers become comfortable with the program, while we address practices. And while students develop new strategies and understandings. So we had, we'd actually anticipated going into the school year that the math, that there would be a dip. We, we were expecting actually that it would look, that, that there would be a greater dip based on the research around implementation dip. Um. Implementation dips, and we didn't see as, as strong of a dip, so we're, we're pleased with the progress that students made this year. Um, in terms. Um, in terms of the action steps, the continued implementation of IM, um, a high-quality program for grades uh K to eight. We, as you know, are piloting the Open Up Program in grades nine and ten. Um, and we feel like it's going to be a greater consistency and alignment between teachers, but also greater, greater alignment from the strategies and skills students are developing through the IM program and K to eight as they move up to the high school. Um, access to high-quality instructional materials for the grades nine and ten. And that we're providing some professional development for those teachers. Um, as with the EL, we um are looking at how, how do we better use the data that we have to drive instruction for our students and to drive our intervention groupings? And also looking at um the district-wide PD that we can provide to support teachers. Finally, we have our science results, and as you know, that's only implemented or assessed in grades five, eight, and ten. But again, you see the performance from twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and the change. Um, and just as a note there, twenty twenty-two was the first administration of the next generation science MCAS for students in grade ten. Um, so that's why we don't have the score for twenty twenty-one. Again, I broke down um the subgroups for grades five and eight. And for grade ten, so that way you can take a look. And for grade ten, I just have the twenty twenty-three because you don't have the the history because of the the testing. Um, some key takeaways for, in terms of the science, just grade five and eight scores are flat compared to twenty twenty-two. So we're not seeing um the improvements that we we hope to see. Um, but we we're continuing to take a look at what areas that we might need to have greater focus on. Um, the scores continue to be at or above the state average. Um, grade ten did have a drop in scores from twenty-two to twenty-three. Um, and in two thousand twenty-three, the North Middlesex performed at or better the state average. Um, one of the things we're looking at for science, um, as we move forward, we've had started implementation of Project Lead the Way. There's, there's pathways up at the high school and middle school educators are using it. Um, and we're looking at, um, we had started implementation at the elementary school and we're expanding that implementation going into this year. Finally, we just, we, we asked our principals at each um grade level span to take a look at the data holistically uh for their, for their grade level span and identify strengths and supports as well as areas and needs um for continued work. And so our elementary team staff identified just the continued support um for the staff around the implementation of both our EL and IM programs, or our English and Math Program. Um, use of intervention time, which they're calling wind blocks, uh, to provide targeted support and enrichment opportunities. So that's where we're really digging into our data and looking at which students might need specific targeted support. How do we provide it and using that time to to provide those both intervention as well as enrichment opportunities for students that might not be struggling as much with particular concepts. Um, we're trying to be more um mindful about our PLC time this year and really looking at a six to eight week old week cycle um to review student progress, adjust intervention supports accordingly. And really targeting it around looking at kind of problems of practice. So what are we noticing for these students at this time period? And setting a plan both for the students individually as well as for grades that are struggling with specific concepts and identifying a plan that we then progress monitor during that time and evaluate at the end of the sixth week period to see what what next steps need to be taken. Um, we're using our curriculum Monday time for continued PD on programming, training, and data analysis. Um, and then the elementary principals really wanted to highlight the return of social skills groups and lessons. So really placing a greater focus on the social emotional learning and uh skills and competencies that students need to be successful across content areas that aren't, again, just academic specific. Um, what they identified as kind of needs that we need to continue to be thinking about and working on. Uh, figuring out how to get more time for writing support across all grade levels. And while it doesn't say there, I would say across all content areas as well. So teaching students that it's not just about narrative writing, but how do you do different types of writing based on the the class and the subject that you're, you're working in. Um, continuing to develop the foundational skills for reading, writing, and math. Um, and we're seeing the implementation, as I said earlier, of the skills block in our EL programming. Um, identifying PD for continued training in the IM program, the math program. And then social skills groups and lessons, providing student supports in areas that might impact academics. So it's no surprise to anyone that, you know, and, you know, we can go back to Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If those basic needs aren't being met, if the need for safety and security and sense of belonging aren't being met, it's going to impact a student's ability to make the academic progress that we'd hope. At our middle schools, the areas that they identified, again, the IM curriculum and just supporting the teachers around the implementation of that. Similar to the elementary, the use of Patriot Time, which is their intervention block time to provide students with targeted assistance, professional development for about um time to evaluate student progress and interventions. So some of the similar things, which is nice to see that through line between elementary to middle. Um, and one of the things they identified as a strength is supporting the neediest learners. Um, and middle schools have implemented an advisory program. So this year, they're spending time um at the middle schools doing an advisory program to identify some of those skills. Again, that we saw um the elementary principals identify as an area of strength and support that we're providing our students. In terms of needs, um, need for more professional development or support for next year regarding IM. So again, we're in our second year of the math programs, so just continuing to get feedback from teachers about what they need in order to effectively implement the program. And continuing to refine the intervention model, so that Patriot Time, how it can best be structured to support all students and providing time throughout the year to reflect on upon and evaluate data. And we're trying to, we're continuing to play with our PLC and Curriculum Monday time um to make sure that we're giving staff or providing opportunities for them to do that. Finally, at the high school, um, some of these, uh, we saw last year in terms of strengths, but it's a continuation. Um, because it's always a work in progress. Um, but continuing to use the Flex Block as a mean to offer students support and remediation. Um, using the Curriculum Mondays to give departments time to review scores and discuss interventions and best practices. So one of the things we've really been thoughtful about this year is a lot of the, when we talk about high-quality instructional practices, those were things that were introduced initially through our EL program, so our English Language Arts Program for K to eight teachers. And we started to look this year at, those are really high-quality practices regardless of the content area, regardless of the grade level. And so being mindful of how do we bring that up and elevate it to our high school staff to be able to implement. Um, and then continue to monitor the impact of the math curriculum pilot in grade ten. Um, some of the areas that they want to continue to be working on is just how do the curriculum coordinators work um effectively with the department heads to identify areas of intervention, planning staff PD. Um, focusing some more time around our special education liaisons and providing them opportunities to work with the general education teachers in all content areas to identify where students are struggling the most. And how do we kind of embed some more scaffolds to support student learning in those areas? And but the final area, and I've talked about this before, is that portrait of a graduate. And we're really investing a lot of time this year, particularly with our high school staff, to engage in conversations about what are those skills and competencies that students need to have um as they exit North Middlesex? And how do we develop those competencies for students? So not just looking at academic content skills and competencies, but what are the overarching competencies that cross domains and also cross just the, not just the academic domain, but when students enter the workforce? What are those types of skills? And so that's a quick, as quick as I can be overview.
Gary, uh, Susan, do you have a question?
I do, I was just looking for how to unmute myself. Um, I just wanted, from my understanding, I know what ELA is, I know what ELL is, but where does EL fit in? I think I missed something.
So that is our ELA program. It's called Expeditionary Learning EL. It's actually, the full term is EL Education, so that's the program um that we're using.
So it's the curriculum that we purchased for ELA?
That's correct, and we're in our third year of implementing that.
Okay, okay, I thought there was a change to the ELL language at some point where they're not using the term ELL anymore and.
Yes, so, so they, they now have shifted, um, uh, you know, once we get used to an acronym, the state finds the need to change them. Um, so now they are referring to um our English Language Learners, which we used to call ELLs. They are now calling them ELs, Ls. So, so there is a little confusion with uh that our ELA program, EL Education versus Ls, which are English learners, second language learners.
Okay, okay, thanks, I. I'm relearning or unlearning.
We all learn, and then they'll change it for us, so.
Yes. Thanks, Gary.
You're welcome.
This is very, uh, June.
I just wanted to say thank you for walking us through all of this because I read through it prior to the meeting and it made a lot more sense listening to you um go into the details about it. So thank you for that. Um, and I also wanted to say congratulations again to Ashby Elementary School and to recognize that Mrs. C has been the principal there for over twenty years. And I believe this is the third time that Ashby Elementary has been recognized as top in the state in the time that she's been there. So um, that's pretty significant, but congratulations to the whole team there and um, it's awesome, so that's all.
Anybody else have questions or comments? All right, well, I'll echo what June said. I appreciate you walking through this. Um, it's very, uh, very insightful and provides a lot of, uh, a lot of data to digest, so appreciate that. Oh, Lisa, do you have a question or comment?
Um, this is just a quick question. Um, I didn't realize that parents could opt out of the MCAS.
So it's at the high school level, there's a requirement for students, um, because it's part of our graduation requirements. Um, it is something that, um, there is flexibility for student families to opt out. Um, from our school perspective, we, we don't encourage it because it's an opportunity for for parents to get a glimpse into kind of how their children are performing at at the grade level. It helps us in terms of identifying our best practices and how we might need to modify curriculum. And as, as you see from this year, um, it impacted our accountability rating for one school because of um three students that had opted out.
But why would parents want to opt out of MCAS?
I, you know, I think diff- different reasons, some, I'm, I'm, I think that's one of the things we need to explore more with families that do request to opt their children out to get a better understanding of of their reasons. And maybe it's just an an issue of us needing to explain things better to them.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
Thank you, Lisa. Susan, do you have another comment?
No, I was trying to take my hand down, sorry.
All right, definitely. All right, um, I think we'll close out on that one. Thanks again, um, for the good discussions. Do you want to jump down again? Uh, I have no objections to uh item number two under Old Business, the town representative to attend negotiation meetings. I know, um, I believe Eric Slagel is on and uh does want to carry on to the rest of his evening soon. So we can uh jump over to that. I'd appreciate that. And I don't know, Superintendent, if you want to give a little background on this beyond just uh looking to have uh the town administrator from Townsend to attend uh as an active participant of uh upcoming negotiations.
Sure, so um, at this point, we have had three budget meetings with the um three TAs um from our, from member communities. Uh, and um Mr. Slagel, who is a town manager from Townsend, has been um selected by the uh select boards in Ashby, Townsend, and Pepperell to be the um community representative, or your municipal representative, excuse me, in in this year's uh collective bargaining negotiations with the Teachers Association. Honestly, I, I think with the budget challenges that that we are facing, um, it would be very helpful to have Mr. Slagel at the table, um, when we're actually doing the negotiations and be more involved than the municipal, than the municipal rep has been re-involved in the past. I, I know my, my last time going through this, we did not have a representative participate. And I believe the first year I came into the district, we did have someone who was uh essentially um voting in the executive session meetings to either approve the contract or not approve the contract. But I think, um, a- again, I think it would lead to a greater understanding uh among our three member communities. Um, help with transparency and allow everyone to get a fuller picture of what goes into the negotiations and what can, how it plays a role in our um annual budgets. This is something that that does have to be approved by the committee is um to my knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, I just had, uh, I guess, two things. Um, first of all, uh, Mr. Slagel, thank you for, for stepping up to participate. I, this is uh not going to be a, an easy or a fun year. So you, you, you and the rest of the committee is going to have their work cut off for them for sure. But I was wondering just for, for the committees, my own benefit, if you could just provide a little bit of background on kind of any experience um on negotiations and and why you think it'd be a good addition. I know I did reach out to Andrew McLean from from Pepperell. Um, and he uh spoke highly of your background, but I think it'd be good for the rest of the committee to hear that as well.
Sure, thank you very much, it's your chair, and and thanks for uh for taking, we've been being willing to take this a little bit out of order. Uh, so just a, uh, my name is Eric Slagel. I am the town administrator for Townsend. Um, I've been there for about eighteen months now. Um, a little bit about my background, um, I, I, I'm an attorney by practice. I, I, uh, I've been practicing municipal law for about twenty years. Um, uh, I worked for Copeland and Page just out of law school. Um, and then worked for seven years in um the law department for the city Lowell, um, during which time I participated in multiple collective bargaining sessions for the Lowell, uh, not school side, but for the, for the, the city side, uh, unions. Um, I, I, uh, after that, I spent about a decade um on the policy side for the city. Um, uh, running the code enforcement and um land use uh and planning staff. Um, uh, during that time, I, I also did participate in uh collective bargaining negotiations. And um in my eighteen months with Townsend, um, uh, we've uh had uh collective bargaining negotiations with um, uh, four of the town's five unions, um, which have gone um uh mostly successfully. I'll, Jess could probably comment on that. Um, uh, so I, I, I do have some experience being on the management side of of the table for collective bargaining over the past twenty years. Um, uh, I, I feel like, you know, it, I, I've been working with uh both Andrew from Pepperell and 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 the fire chief from Ashby, who's their acting town administrator um on uh kind of the collective uh budget piece for the towns in conversation with Brad and his staff. Um, when we're talking about the, the regional school district budget. Uh, so I feel like I, I have a good handle, not just on, on Townsend's finances, but the finances of of all the towns to the extent that they're known right now. Um, and I, I think uh it would be uh helpful and illuminating for uh all of, I think, the, the the administration of the towns to have someone um in the room to talk about the town's perspectives on these uh negotiations. So I, I, I would, uh, I would appreciate. I would appreciate the opportunity to do it. I agree with you, Mr. Chair. It's going to be a challenging conversation with the teachers. And, and I, I, I look forward to doing anything I can to try to help the sides come to a, an agreement that works fiscally for everybody over the life of the contract.
Craig, Susan? I would like to move that we accept Eric Slagel as a member of the negotiation team for our collective bargaining agreement negotiations with the teachers association.
Alright, I do believe just to maybe update that to have him as the district towns representative to attend negotiation meetings.
Yes. Yes, yeah, Eric as the municipal representative.
Thank you. Alright, now we have a second. Brad, did you still have a question? I see your hand is up or?
I, I did just want to add that our legal counsel also recommended that Eric participate, be a full-fledged participant in this as well.
Thank you. Randy?
I just wanted to add, just so everybody understands. With the municipal rep being a voting member during negotiations for negotiations with Eric being at the table, he does count towards quorum there. So, we cannot have let's say, well, that makes ten. So, is five still quorum? No, it would have to be six. With ten. So, at the table, we can have no more than five. Not that we're at risk of going over that, but just wanted to make everyone aware that he does count towards quorum there.
Thank you, Lisa. Martin?
Is this just with the teachers association or is he doing all of our contracts with us? Our other bargaining units?
That's really up to, to the committee. I know previously Anne Marie and myself have, have, at least the last contract did the other four. But that's, you know, certainly that's completely up to the school committee as to how you want to handle that moving forward.
Because the, the paras are also MTA.
Yes.
And secretaries, are they MTA also?
I don't believe the secretaries are.
No, secretaries are not, but nurses are.
Yes.
Well, I thought nurses was their own.
Yeah, they, they're, they have like basically two. They are in the MTA contract, but they do have their own union representative that's not MTA.
Okay.
But I think that would be subject to further discussion. We generally start the, start the teacher ones first and
Right.
But I, I do think it, it may be different this time around.
So, what we're voting on with Eric is strictly the North Middlesex Teachers Association negotiations.
That's my understanding, yes. But if the entire group is going to do the other four CBAs as well, it may make sense, you know, to, to bring that to the table when that time comes as well.
Because the other thing to keep in mind is scheduling. The more people you have, you're trying to accommodate their schedule, the more challenging it gets. So.
Right.
Which is one of the reasons we used to split teachers separate, you have the subcommittee from the school committee. We have, you know, teachers and then we'd have a second committee that did everybody else. That met with everybody else, I should say.
So, just for clarity, so the motion, I mean, the suggested motion was to attend negotiation meetings. Susan, are you saying this motion is just for teachers?
That's what I was saying. Yes, that was what I understood to be the request.
And the ability would be to, again, would be to come back once we start with the other four groups and take them as they come to determine if it's going to be. You know, I, I think we have to look at what the landscape is looking like.
And I don't think we've, okay, I'm sorry, Brad.
I was just going to say, again, it's very possible that we may have to approach the other four groups differently this time around. And have the full negotiation subcommittee engaged.
And I, I would like to see the full school committee approve or not delegating. And sometimes, like Anne Marie was saying, we have superintendent and HR. I would like the full school committee to be making that decision, not the subcommittee. I don't know how anyone else feels about that.
For the other four groups?
Yeah, I would, yes. Are we leaving that in the hands of the subcommittee? Or is the full school committee going to determine who is negotiating with those other groups?
I think that's up to the school committee.
Yeah, I think it has to be the full committee that, full committee appointed a negotiation subcommittee to handle the negotiations, not to then further delegate that responsibility. So, the full school committee would have to decide on that.
I wanted, that's why I wanted to try to clarify that right now. How much the school committee is delegating to negotiation subcommittee? How much authority?
I mean, as far as Eric's participation goes, maybe we say that Eric is a full participant when the full negotiation subcommittee is engaged in negotiations with any of the five CBAs. So, if the full negotiation subcommittee is going to engage with the power professionals, then Eric would be involved. Maintenance custodians, nurses, secretaries, Eric would be involved.
And before this statement you just made, we were going to take it as it comes?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that if the subcommittee is going to participate in all five groups, maybe we just say that Eric we just add Eric to the negotiation subcommittee for negotiations.
I wasn't suggesting that that the negotiation subcommittee participate in all five.
Okay.
I was suggesting that the school committee have the final determination for each group who's going to negotiate it.
Okay.
If, if, if I'm not considering something, please speak up, Brad, or and that's just a suggestion. We haven't voted on that, but I was opening up for conversation. I don't know the people on the negotiation subcommittee, but their thoughts would be on that.
Randy, do you have a comment?
I, I was just going to say, I, I think for right now, it's most likely going to be just the teachers for a little bit before we even start to engage the other the groups. So, we can kind of revisit this and decide at that point when negotiations open up with the next group on whether it's the current subcommittee. If it's a different subcommittee that will approve. Or if it's going to be like it was the last time with just Anne Marie and Brad. So, I think for right now, I think we can just see how the teachers are going and then revisit.
So, then the motion would be that the, before beginning negotiations with a new association union, bring it to the school committee to assign negotiations team.
Are you changing your motion? That's on the floor?
What did I have? No, I, I think the only motion I had on the floor, sorry, was Eric participating in teachers. I forgot, we hadn't voted on that yet.
No.
I was, I was putting a new motion out there regarding all the other groups.
Alright, so let's hold.
Hold on this one first?
I'll hold on that, yeah.
So, Jess, do you have a question, comment?
So, the only thing that we're doing right now is the teachers. Nothing else is started yet. So, it's just purely the teachers right now. And I think that Eric can bring a lot to the table. I've worked with him for the past more than a year now, and he does have a lot of knowledge and insight into all of these things. And I think that he would be a huge help to us as the subcommittee.
Thank you, Jess. Any other comments on the appointment? Alright, so this is to approve the district town representative to attend teacher negotiations for, on behalf of the three towns. Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can, and I will vote yes. So, that is unanimous.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you and congratulations.
Alright, talk to you guys later.
Alright, have a good night. Alright, back to Dr. Reese again for the homeschool report.
So, you get to see me one more time this evening. I do promise this will be a very brief presentation. I just want to share, as we do annually, the homeschool data as of the beginning of October. As you can see from the chart, that's projected, we have a hundred fifty-seven homeschool students coming from seventy-eight families. This is a decrease of four point two seven percent from last year. So, if you go back, you know, what you can see there is kind of a ten-year perspective. Obviously, during the time of the pandemic, we saw a spike from the previous year of nineteen-twenty school year of ninety-five students to two hundred fifteen students. And we're slowly decreasing those, the number of students that are participating in homeschool down to a hundred fifty-seven students for this school year. All those families have submitted the required paperwork, have, for those families that are returning, they've also submitted progress reports or some other measure to demonstrate the academic progress that the students, their children made the prior school year. And that's it.
Dave, did you have a comment? Are you good? I'm sorry, your hand's up.
No, I just read something.
Alright, no worries. Alright. Good to see a steady decline since, since the COVID year. So, that's, that's good to see.
Yep.
Alright, any other questions from anybody? Alright.
Okay, thank you, other one.
Next, we have the superintendent goals. Superintendent Morgan?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if you want me to read through these. I did share them. I want to say about a week and a half ago, and they, they have been a part of the packet. But I do have three goals. I, I obviously do have to go back and assign them standards and elements, which I can do, which I can do and obviously send back a final copy to you. But prior to doing that, I just wanted to make sure that my goals were acceptable with the committee. And, you know, certainly have discussed these with, with Dr. Reese to make sure that they are in line in line with his goals and in line with our strategic plan, both this year and a new one that we, that we will be presenting at the end of this coming school year. As we start a new one. But again, just not sure what level you want me to present these, or would you like me to answer questions? I'm, I'm not sure what the, what the best way is to do this. I know in the past, I've just taken questions on them and happy to do it either way.
I'll, I'll pull them up if folks have specific questions, but if everybody's seen it, I don't think we need to go line by line.
Okay.
Questions from anybody? Lisa Bloom?
Yeah, there's a question. I was going to actually email you, Brad, but I got so busy with handling these stuff. So, on your, where you just created a superintendent advisory that's comprised of six community members, two of each member community. How did you go about choosing those six members?
I asked the elementary principals at each level for recommendations of parents who they felt would be engaged. And I did that primarily because the, the coffees that I had been running, both in person and virtually, had, had become ineffective. They were just, I was essentially getting one person to come. So, I needed to make sure I was getting people that were engaged. So, I reached out to the principals in each, in each one, basically asked them if they, if, for recommendations. And also looked at, then looked at people that were communicating with me on a regular basis.
Okay, yeah, because I do remember through the summer, we talked about the coffees. You haven't had any attendance at them. When I spoke to you possibly about finding about, out about the roundtable. So, does this how do you go about communicating with the, the six members?
So, we meet monthly.
Okay.
I send out usually an email to them. I actually sent out an email this evening to them looking for agenda items. We have a, a meeting next week. The agenda is driven by the six community members and I bring in, they're out in the community. You know, keeping their ears to the ground about potential issues and bringing issues to me. And then I'm bringing those issues to the leadership team for discussion and then reporting back to the advisory at our subsequent meeting. But we, we've been meeting once a month since July, I believe, was our first meeting, June or July. We had a meeting in August, we had a meeting in September, and we, we will meet throughout the, the remainder of the school year and then evaluate the value of those meetings.
Okay, so, why did you only choose parents of the elementary schools?
So, I, I actually reached, if I said elementary, I, 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 I made an error. I reached out to the principals and asked for recommendations. So, in, in one case, we have a community member that doesn't have any children in the school. It's actually a retired teacher from another school system. In another case, it is a resident that doesn't have any children, again, in the district, but is very much involved in the district, very much involved in the community. And again, just, just built it off of what the principals were recommending to me. And wanted it to be as, as long-lasting as, I mean, they, for the most part, they ended up being elementary and middle school parents. But ultimately, that's also going to hopefully provide some longevity to the group as well.
Right.
Being able to keep a group in place for a period of time and, and hopefully, you know, keep them on for a number of years.
Does this advisory, do the advisory members, do they communicate with the whole community? Or just for the students in the school and parents?
So, I, I've asked them to be out in the community, not, not necessarily with students, but bringing issues that they hear about out in their community. That they hear about from other community members, that they hear about from parents, and in some cases from students to the table for discussion on how to problem solve, to get their recommendations, their thoughts. I kind of update them on what's going on in the district. And again, I bring it back to the leadership team for discussion.
Okay. Then I had one other question. Well, I was happy to see that you have five students with a financial literacy, because we spoke about that when I met with you. But is it possible to possibly add in there, like students need life skills as well and like cooking and different like shock classes or different things to be able to, when they get out of school, do those things as well?
So, it, it's something that we can certainly consider in the future, but keeping in mind that this is going to be a likely budgetary expenditure because it, it, it is going to potentially require another teacher, possibly some professional development training. I want to start small. And, you know, it really does come down to, you know, I, I'm a proponent of House Bill three twenty-seven, it's called. I, I wrote a support letter that I'm happy to share with the committee that was brought to the floor last week. Have notified the superintendents association of the importance of it. And, you know, I continually hear as an educator how important it is that we are preparing our students to compete in a global economy when in fact, we're sending students to our schools and they don't have any exposure to finances or how to operate their own budgets when they leave school, but they're expected to compete in a global economy. So, you know, I certainly think that there are things that have been removed from the curriculum, such as home economics and things of that nature that are very important. But we've become, you know, the, the curriculum as we all know. Um, but we've become, you know, the, the curriculum, as we all know, has become very standardized, and life isn't standardized. Uh, so i- it would be great to see if we could start adding some of these things back, but there are restrictions on what we're able to add uh, in order to get through the, the core content.
Right, well, I, I was happy to see that you're out of the finances, cuz I think that's very important. Cuz a lot of this, a lot of the students don't even know how to budget a checkbook.
Right.
So, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Lisa, and June.
Um, just a quick comment, um, I was impressed to see that, um, two of these both, um, maybe not stemmed from, but, um, had something to do with the students civic action project. Uh, because it, it was pretty impressive seeing what the students put together and what they wanted to see for change, um, so I really like, um, that you paid attention to that and that you're incorporating that into your next steps, so um, I appreciate that, anyhow, just wanted to say that.
No, thank you, and, um, I, I am actually working with a group of three students on the financial literacy piece, and they'll be presenting next month a- at this meeting. Um, because they're very passionate about it, and they're passionate about it, knowing that it's not something that they're going to get to experience, because they're all seniors now. Um, but in my conversations with them last year, they, they wanted to see this, um, come to fruition. And they committed themselves to working with me during the school year to, um, you know, to make sure everyone knows how important it is to them as students. Um, and I think that, you know, it's certainly something worth listening to if the students are bringing it forward, saying that this is something that's very important to us, to, you know, to, to really provide us with a life skill. Um, and again, that ability to compete in that global economy that everyone's always talking about, so it's been a great experience working with these three individuals so far, you'll get to meet them next week. And I plan on working with them, um, throughout this process. I, I told them that they would have their fingerprints on this as well, if we're able to get this through.
Excellent, thank you, Brad.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing, I, I echo what, uh, what others have said, I, I think these are, these are good goals, um. On the third one for the collaborative budget process, um, it, it understatement of it being a challenge, a challenging year, but, um, appreciate, uh, the work you've already started, Brad, to engage the towns and, and have those conversations early, and, and, uh, uh, again, I think getting, uh, Mr. Sligo involved, uh, in negotiations is another good step there. Um, I think the only thing I would ask there is, uh, um, so, and I know you will, but just to make sure you leverage the, the committee as much as possible, and I'd ask the committee members as well to make sure that we're keeping an ear to the towns. Um, to make sure that we're, we're best balancing the needs of the, the students in the district with the capabilities and capacity of, of the towns to, to support the financial aspect of it. Um, there's a lot of pressures, I know, at least in Pepperell, um, on their budget outside of just the school, so it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a challenge on all fronts, unfortunately.
Right, and it's something that we, um, we actually had, um, Jordan from Guilfoyle, um, come our PR firm last, uh, to our meeting on Monday. And, excuse me, on Tuesday, and we really want to make sure that, um, that we're messaging this the right way, that we're using the PR firm, but also working in a, in a manner in which, uh, we're presenting a budget that this is what the towns need. Um, this is what the town sides, this is what the towns need as part of, um, you know, their town services, and this is what the school district needs. And how do we present that together, so it's not, um, you know, one gets something and the other doesn't, how do we work forward and work together to make this, this is the budget that North Middlesex needs that Pepperell, Townsend, and Ashby need to provide the services to the three towns that the citizens deserve.
Great, I appreciate that, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments from the committee? Alright, then I'll take a motion to, uh, have the school committee approve the superintendent's goals as presented.
So moved?
Second.
I think we need to let Susan back in, too. She's hanging out in the.
Is she?
Yeah.
We should be awesome.
Alright, thank you. My Zoom is really slow all of a sudden. Alright, so Susan's back, uh, any other questions, comments on the superintendent's goals? Alright, then we will, uh, put it on the list, so Dave?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Uh, Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes, somebody's gonna hear me.
Yep. And, uh, so, uh, those are approved, Superintendent Morgan, appreciate you putting those together.
Thank you.
Look forward to, uh, positive results. Um, and next up, we have the FY twenty twenty-three final general fund expense report and excess and deficiency for Miss Haynes.
I'll, I'll be quick, I know you, it's been a long meeting for you. But I did want to update the committee on the F, the results of the final FY twenty-three budget. We did, um, get our excess and deficiency funds approved recently, which I'm, I'm guessing some people are notified, I believe the school committee is notified. But that's in the packet, it's two million, six hundred seventy-four thousand, one hundred dollars. And the, um, the detailed expense and revenue reports are also in the packet for your review. And essentially, the excess and deficiency was added to by about a million, five hundred thousand from unspent expenditures and another six hundred thousand from revenue, and the difference being what was carried over from our prior year. So that's, uh, where, where we ended the year, I, I think it went pretty well, we finished our audit, we're just waiting for the final reports, should have those um, coming up soon, um, maybe for one of the future meet, next future meetings. And I didn't know if there was any specific questions, I'm happy to address that. I'm also happy, um, I haven't offered this, but uh, prior to the start of the budget season, if anybody would like to have me walk through the, the different sections of the budget and how it's put together, I'm happy to do that. Um, if, if there's any interest.
Thank you, Nisa.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions for Miss Haynes? Alright, that was quick, I appreciate that. Um, moving on to the MAS C delegate selection, so we tabled this or continued this from our last meeting. Um, I think we were unanimous in agreeing with Randy that she should be the should be the delegate, but, uh, she was gonna come back to us.
Yeah, I just, uh, having a hard time getting the motivation to go out there for that many days.
Yep.
Um, uh, they have a Friday only, but it doesn't help with the with the delegation meeting on being on Wednesday.
Right.
Um.
I wish they'd do a hybrid option for that meeting at least, and allow people to, uh, to join remotely, it's unfortunate they won't do that.
Yeah, no, definitely, um, you shouldn't have to pay all that money to participate uh, in a group that we're already paying to be part of and have a saying.
Agree.
So.
Um, is, i- if you're not able to go, Randy, or we can continue this again, but I don't know if anyone else was interested or able to attend, I am unfortunately not, but, um, or we'll take a motion to not appoint anybody if we want to go that route as well, whatever folks are agreeable to.
I move to not send any representatives.
Second. I mean, depending on whether Randy wants to go or not, but if, it might not work out, and.
I mean, we could, yeah, we, we can not send anybody, or Randy, if you're on the fence, we can appoint you, and then if you can't go, you don't go. No harm, no foul at that point, but if you're pretty sure you're not gonna go, then I think we should make a decision along.
Uh, so I'm just checking my work calendar, it, it's the is it the eighth, ninth, and tenth, or is it the first, second, and third, I forget?
Um.
I, I think it's the eighth.
I thought so, yeah, it sounds familiar.
Yep. It's the.
Yeah, it's usually that first week.
I think it's the eighth and.
Oh, you know what? Um, yeah, uh, something got added to my calendar on that Thursday that I definitely cannot go.
Okay. Alright, so then we have a motion to not send anybody. Any discussion on that? Alright. So we're voting on not having a delegate, so Dave? Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Uh, Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan? Susan, you're muted if you're talking. Alright, I will vote yes, and we'll take Susan as an abstention. Okay, well, thank you, um. Next, we have a subcommittee updates, um. Lisa, any updates on accelerated repair or finance? This is trying to unmute.
Sorry, my screen kept disappearing. Um, no updates, we'll probably schedule a finance meeting for next week, sometime after we have our first negotiations, like, true meeting and not the ground rules.
Okay. Um, thank you. June, any update from Ashby? Don't think me.
Uh, no update, our next meeting is Tuesday, the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Um, communications? Somehow my name is there with Robin. This, but I've sent a couple emails on this topic.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, to give the committee members a reminder that uh, we really want our, um, our website to, um, to reflect the professional group that we are, and in order to do that, we do need a bio and a picture, so I'm, I'm really pushing for this, um. I think I sent out dates, uh, for our picture days, and, and you can come in for those, or you can um, come in for the retake days, I'm happy to, to actually take your picture myself, you know, iPhones are pretty good quality these days, so, um, and I don't need you to write your bio, if you can just send a little blurb along to me. Um, if you need some, um, questions to, uh, prompts, I'm happy to provide those for you as well. Um, but just a little something, and, um, and, you know, I'll help write, write up the bio, um, June McNeil has a, a beautiful bio. Uh, Jess has a, a really nice bio. Um, Craig's is nice as well, so if you need, um, you need some ideas, um, you know, you can look on the website. And as you can and you can see that several of us have the new, um, NM Patriots, um, Zoom background, so um, if you didn't receive that, just let me know, and I'm, I'm happy to send that and the directions along, um, again. Uh, again, it's just, you know, we're trying to take it to the next level and always, uh, present, uh, professional, um, uh, the, um, sorry, I have a little dog who's um, scratching away at my feet over here, um, you know, we always just want to present, um, being professional and it, you know, having the bio and our pictures, um, you know, I think that's gonna go a long way on the website.
Robin, um, Randy and I do have a plan to go to one of those, um, school photo days together, I don't remember what day it is, so.
Awesome, yeah, that's, that's great. I, I see that Lisa and, um, Gary, their photos came through this week, and, uh, I, they came out really nice, so um, you know, any help you need, just reach out, I'm happy to help.
Can we keep retaking the photo from the different schools?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Can we keep retaking the photo, hit each photo session?
You can, I'm sure that, I'm sure they'll work with you.
I'll just, uh, I'm just gonna screen grab from Zoom if, uh, if you're looking, and so there's motivation.
I, I'm trying to get away from that, I'm, I'm trying to get away from the, the selfie, that we really need professional headshots, so.
Yep, I agree, alright, thank you, Robin. And thanks, everybody. Um, I'm gonna skip down to policy, uh, Randy, wanna give a rundown on the policies we have?
Uh, yes, we have, was it one, two, three, four, five for our first reading, does anybody have any problems if I make a motion for all of them at once, since they are all first readings? And I'm just gonna go out to the public. Uh, these are all part of our five-year review. Um, so these were, most of these were very small changes, um, and some wording, um, that MAS C had from what we had back in on a couple of these, I think, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. Um, so not big changes, uh, but we did change them enough, uh, that we're bringing them forward. So I move, uh, that we uh, that the school committee approve following policies for first reading. So it'd be ECAF, security cameras in schools, EDE, recyclable materials, EEA, student transportation services, EEAA walkers and riders, EEAG, student transportation in private vehicles.
Bucket. June can have it.
Yeah, I also want to let you know, I haven't had a chance to go over all of them, um, but late, and I didn't have a chance to go through it, uh, we did get some, um, some couple small uh, suggestions for changes from the attorney on these, we don't think they're big changes, um, I will put them up and I will highlight them. Um, and this will be up on the website for everybody to see with the changes.
Alright, so you know questions or comments? And just clarity, uh, Randy, I just want to make sure you just did the five, uh, E policies for first reading, not the, did you do ADF?
No, I'm taking separate, cuz that's a, that's a second, uh, or second reading or in adoption.
Okay. Alright, so so you know questions, um, so this is to adopt the five policies for first reading, David?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yeah.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
You now vote yes, so that is unanimous, those will go out on the website for, uh, community feedback, and we'll review those at the next meeting for uh, any changes and adoption.
Okay, and next, uh, we have policy ADF wellness, it has been up for a number of weeks, uh, for public review. Uh, been through a first, uh, reading, I have not had any feedback on this policy. Um, this was a policy that, uh, there was a full, um, uh, committee, uh, led by Ms. Hampson, um, the Director of Health Services in the district, um, that helped put this together. Um, so I move that the school committee approve policy ADF wellness for adoption as presented.
Bucket.
Alright, any questions or comments from anybody? Alright, this is, uh, policy for adoption, it's been out for inputs, so we're adopting as presented, Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Now vote yes, so that is unanimous, is there anything else from policy, Randy?
Uh, that is all, uh, we, we are currently at this point in time, meeting twice a month is what we've set up. Uh, one meeting for the five-year review, uh, cycle to make sure that we go through all of these policies, uh, at least once every five years to keep them updated and don't get into that same situation of having, you know, twenty, twenty-five years of not looking at them. Um, and the second one is for all current, um, things that come up, whether it be the MAS C has updated it because of new laws or regulations or changes that we're looking to make, uh, that that seem to have worked out this month, and look forward to, uh, next month, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, anything from negotiations and personnel, Dave, or Lisa, I know we have some executive session stuff, but I don't know if you have another update?
Yep, uh, ground rules were set on Thursday, and the next meeting is Monday.
Alright. Thank you, uh, any update from the liaisons to the towns? June, Dave, or Jess?
Um, just a quick announcement for Ashby, we do have a new select board member, Jessica Callan, so we have a full select board again, which is great.
Yay. Anything from Towns and Pepperell, or? Nope, alright. Alright, any other open business that I may have overlooked? If not. I will, uh, take the motion to enter executive session.
So moved?
Well, you gotta read.
Alright, that would take me a minute to look it up. Does anybody else have it in front of them?
Move to meet in executive session pursuant to MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, for the following purpose. To conduct strategy sessions in preparat- in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or conduct collective bargaining sessions. Or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Director of Pupil Personnel Services. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for. Collective bargaining with the North Middlesex Regional School District Teachers Association because of open discussion may be detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. Purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid. Rerequirements, approval of executive session minutes dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, September seventh, two thousand twenty-three, September twenty-fourth. Two thousand twenty-three, September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three negotiations, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three negotiations. The committee will not reconvene in open session.
Alright, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, thank you, Lisa, for reading that, just for a second. Uh, so this is to enter executive session, um. And as a reminder to the committee, there is a separate link for that. Uh, Dave?
Yes.
Uh, Jess?
Yes.
June?
Yeah.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, and I will vote yes. Also, the committee will now meet in executive session pursuant to MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, for the following purposes. Purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The Director of Pupil Personnel Services. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with the North Middlesex Regional School District Teachers Association. Because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. Purpose seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any, any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Since for the approval of executive session minutes dated June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, September seven, twenty twenty-three. September twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, and that's from negotiations, and October sixteen, twenty twenty-three, also negotiations. The committee will not reconvene in an open session. Um, so thank you to those from the public that were here, and, uh, the rest of the committee will talk to you.